Here I have that first of all, I'm going to invite our coffee princess up here to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And your name is.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can change a little bit tonight because we have a poppy princess up here on before we do anything, I'd like just people to do a proclamation here if I may. Whereas America is the land of the free. Preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers, whereas. The nation at peace must be reminded by the price of war and death for those who have died in war. Where else the red copy has been designated a symbol of sacrifice of lights of all wars. Whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged. To remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. Therefore, I stand with the Lord, village president of the village of Grafton, Wisconsin. If you're by proclaim the twenty sixth and twenty seventh days of May, twenty twenty three as poppy days in the village of Grafton. Wisconsin and ask that citizens pay tribute. To those who made ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing memorial poppy during this month. And this is our copy. Sorry for that little detour there, but it's very important that we honor our our agenda auxiliary and our copy princess. Did sign it. We will, we have that proclamation done. Okay, next, I would ask that the roll call here that all the people present trustee partners and officials are noted as part of them. Uh, we'll take a vote for to approve the minutes, approve the May first twenty twenty three village board meeting. And file the September first twenty twenty two zoning board of appeals. The March twenty seventh twenty twenty three joint library board, the March twenty eighth twenty twenty three planning commission, April sixth twenty twenty three finance committee. The April tenth twenty twenty three board of public works, the April twelfth twenty twenty three architectural review board meeting minutes as presented. Need a motion in a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion in second, any changes, additions, corrections?
Just one spelling error on village meeting minutes on page five, the first paragraph. It's perfectly left out that she felt like she that she felt.
Any others? All right, we have a motion in second, all in favor, say aye, aye. All rights, next on our agenda item are requesting to be heard. On a non agenda item, all members of the public are welcome to address to the board, individual comments are limited to no more than two minutes each. We would ask that if you'd like to make a comment on something, you stand up, come to the our deus here to the microphone. And present what you'd like to present, just for everybody to know, there can be no action taken on this. As anybody signed up to speak at this point? Very well, Mr. Malone, would you like to speak?
Sit down here.
That right, if you may, please.
William James Malone, seven, five, three, Prairie Run. Representing Heritage Settlement subdivision road redesign. My comments, as you stated, the road will be narrowed by four feet. Two feet of gravel shoulder will be replaced, creating a twenty six foot wide roadway. You're proposing this redesign as a cost savings and from a dealer's thought. You should do all you can to save taxpayers money, I'm fully supporting that, however, this is at a cost of safety. Of its residents, I feel that you buy this design are not providing the best safe solution for the taxpaying residents. Of heritage settlement. Please reconsider. Your proposed redesign and retain the current road width. I would also recommend as keeping with the village standard. To include a white line designated the traffic lane. And pedestrian lane on either side of the road. I'm asking that the village board this question. And would like an answer emailed to me, I have two questions, since the road work has not yet begun. Can this be reviewed again by the public works committee? Question two, since when has a village adopted a policy requiring pedestrians to walk in a traffic lane? Best regards. William Malone, I'd like to bring this up to you.
Yeah, we, there's no discussion of these items, we'll certainly take a look at that, but thank you for your opinion and for your your letter. Next here, Mr. Morandi. Oh, and one thing, if you can, if you're going to cover the same thing that Mr. Malone did, we would just ask that you say, I agree with him. Um, it just kind of keeps things pretty well.
I do, okay, agree with him, very good, I've got here eighty one signatures from residents in her subdivision. That are unanimously opposed to the current plan with the gravel strip. Now, I, I don't want to echo what what Mr. Malone said, but I'd like to present these to the board. Now, we would have more, but we've only had a week to gather these signatures, and a lot of people are out of town, it's unanimous. Eighty five homeowners out there don't want it. They want their road replaced to the current condition, not current condition, current width.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Hi, Gary. I'm sorry, can't read the last name. Nurse Sarah, I'll pass, you'll pass, okay, thank you, Mr. Yomki, Jeff Yomki, two thirty eight Prairie Run.
I also live on Prairie Run, I agree with the two previous speakers. And just to add, again, I started coming into the slate because we've been out of town, but my understanding is. You're using what's on Cedar Creek Road as a model in terms of the gravel and the the two feet setback on either side. I don't know if any of you have looked at Cedar Creek recently, but it doesn't look real good, doesn't look like it's maintained. And I guess my question would be, is there any maintenance on something like that, or once the gravel's put down, that's it, and you walk away for from it from it? Because if that's the case, then I think it's a big mistake, I think, you know, the road should be paved all the way as it is now. And then, you know, we we have our our own yards to deal with, but Cedar Creek should not be a model because it doesn't look good. If any of you seen it, if not, take a ride over there and see what you think, because most of the gravel is gone. In fact, there's a lot of grass that's grown over it, so I don't think it's the best model to use.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Or anybody else willing, I need to speak on this or other items. I want to thank our citizens for coming in and expressing your opinions on this. We appreciate that. Next on the agenda of those.
I'd just like to take a quick moment to introduce the process for the village board. After April eighteenth meeting, the village board chose to fill the trustee vacancy via an appointment processes versus holding a special election. Or holding the seat vacant, a timeline has been established, which was attached here to the IFC, and we have followed. The vacancy was posted online and via social media, further, it was posted on the public bulletin boards at Village Hall, Police Department, Library, Senior Center, and the Public Works Building. Names of the applicants were drawn at random by the village clerk following the closing or submitted deadline of applications of four P M. on Monday, on May eleventh. That said, the. Open session interviews for this position are in the order as follows. Matthew O'Brien. Andrew Schwartz, Clark Evans, David List, Marie McFaul. As I mentioned, five, five candidates. Again, these are open session candidate interviews, also an open session upon completion of the interviews, the village board. Members will vote via a preference ballot whereby a written vote will be cast. That said, those ballots are on the dais for the board this evening, your name and your vote need to be indicated on the ballot. In open session, the ballots will be collected and tallied and read aloud by the. Village attorney. That said, the tally would indicate an initial preference for the village board to entertain a motion and second for the appointment. In the event of a tie, the village board may deliberate further and hold another preference vote again in open session. At the end, the action requested would be to motion to appoint. Insert candidate's name to the village board of trustees effective upon their being sworn in by the village clerk with the term expiring in April twenty twenty four. That said, the first official meeting for an appointed and a trustee that is appointed this evening will be the. First meeting in June, which would be Monday, June fifth. That is the process before the village board this evening. With that, I will step aside and candidates may be called up by the board for their interviews.
Great, thank you, Jesse. Okay, so what we're going to do first here is I will do the first set of questions, I'll start with the first question. I know Jim and you two, and then after that, I'm just gonna go left to right and we'll we'll take those questions. So we recall Matthew O'Brien. I'm sorry, okay, I.
I'm sorry, I failed to clarify that, if you're offering me. Well, these are open session interviews, I would respectfully ask if the other candidates would come with me to the committee room while a candidate is interviewed. This is open session, you do not have to excuse yourself, but we are simply asking out of courtesy for the individual candidate who is interviewing at the time. If you would like to come with me to the committee room, please, our first candidate, Matthew O'Brien, Mr. O'Brien. The other candidates, please come with me.
The question we had here is, is it okay for everybody to be in the next room? Amy and I have all been through this process and we were there, so.
Snow priority.
So, Matthew, thank you very much for coming, it's a great pleasure to meet you.
Thanks for having me.
You're by asking the best first question here. Why did you choose the interview for the village trustee position, but did not submit your name for placement on the ballot for the control election?
Yeah, so when I was looking into local politics and just trying to get more information about said, you know, starting positions or anything like that to get my foot in the door. It was way too late to even get into that position, so I messaged Katie Olson and was able to put in an application for a variety of things, including. Boards of review, boards of public safety and Board of Public Works, so I just put out an application. Katie Olson said that there wasn't anything open, and she would just keep my resume on file. And that's when I received a call that some board position was open. I came to my first meeting, heard about the open position for the village trustee, and then here I am.
Matthew, can you please share with us what type of skills, knowledge, or expertise that you would bring to the position of a village trustee?
Sure, absolutely, for my line of work, I'm a plumber by trade, so along with. Having Grafton's got like a twenty percent on the nongraduate, postgraduate education style. I feel like I can relate with a little bit more people or have a different understanding versus yourselves up there without knowing too much about you. I also am in the National Guard, Wisconsin Army National Guard. I serve as a team leader and will be going to a school to go to become a squad leader, so feel like small teams is where I excel. I can actually work well with other groups. I'd look forward to going on to the board of review to actually see how that works out, my first meeting will be Thursday. So, when I get there, hopefully I can add that on.
I mean, you. One of the biggest challenges that those four faces is that of control of growth. How would you approach the issue of determining the appropriate rate for growth? And the services required to support that?
When I think of controlled growth, it's not so much as a problem, it's better to have steady growth that we can keep up with. So I I know from our local citizens here that they were talking about the the road. Sorry, I'm learning of it just now, so something like that shows that we are growing and we're able to keep up with it. What we could do to better. Go with it, try to understand where their feelings are, what we need to increase and keep going as a as a city. I feel like. Just mutual understanding between ourselves, what we're seeing in the future, preplanning. And then coming back to what everyone else is feeling as the planning is going, so a tandem of working with citizens and. Going forward plans that we have for future.
Yeah. Hello, Matthew.
Hello, Jim, thanks.
If you could change one thing in the village. What would, what would it be and why?
I was gonna say outreach, my first village meeting was very different from this one. We didn't have any turnout for citizens and I I thought that was the big issue, I thought maybe if they didn't know about the. The website, if they weren't actively using it, I heard that we use Instagram from the administrator, I've all great things. The only thing I would change or help out or at least try to is maybe just more visibility for those that don't see. Social media or online or internet groups, maybe something more in the local areas, I know there's village boards that you guys have out there, but maybe more local hotspots like grocery stores or gas stations. If they allow.
Hi, Matthew, thanks for joining us tonight, thanks for your interest.
Thank you.
If appointed to the trustee position, what do you see as the biggest problem or challenge the village faces in the coming years? And then how would you solve or?
For future problems. I'm not as well versed, I moved here in twenty twenty, so being that of three years, I've really just trying to get my foot into the local area. Really trying to branch out and get myself with connected with so many different places, so when I feel like that there isn't really much of a problem. That's something I can't address at this time. If I get more in tune with the local area and what people are going through, just learning today about the the roads and maybe possible Cedar Creek cleanup. Just more outreach of community programs and stuff like that, so at this time, I can't say that there is a very specific problem and how to address it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Matthew. Nice to meet you, thanks for coming tonight.
Nice to see you.
What organizations are drafted who currently volunteer for or want?
So I I may have mentioned of it earlier with the board of review, that is something that I've been appointed to, just saw my name on the village website for the first time a couple of days ago, so that was, that was nice. So as of right now for the local community, that would be the first one on Thursday, going from three to five, I will be there. So those are the local things, I was at the commencement for L T Roy Harms, saw him go and was blown away by the the amount of. People coming to that, it was very good to see, so just starting to get into it as of right now.
Thank you, do you have a closing statement that you would like to make?
Nothing that I prepared for, just wanted to bring it back to the fact that I'm just trying to. Get my foot into the door, bring myself more into the public eye of Grafton and try to introduce myself into things politic wise.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate you coming.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Like you would find it's interviewing. Good evening. We have a series of questions for you.
Hi, Andrew. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you both.
Why did you choose to interview for this village trustee position, but did not submit your name for the ballot?
I didn't submit my name for the ballot in April because at that point in time, I had some other commitments going on that I was doing. At this point in time with the other things that I've done in the past, as far as service goes, I don't have those commitments, so I thought of it as. An opportune time for my commitment of my time to the residents. And also the fact of it being a limited term, to me, it's very interesting that it allowed, it would allow me to participate. In the business of the village via this appointment, and it's a limited term, so again, if it, if I do find out that. It's not my cup of tea or I'm not as helpful as somebody else could possibly be, it it's a, it's kind of a one year step in and step out. So that it gives you. An opportunity to serve and not as much commitment as a as a three year term.
For being here tonight, if you were elected as a trustee, what type of skills, knowledge, and expertise would you bring to the position?
Well, the the skill set that I bring to the to the position for me is. I'm recently retired as a supervisory air traffic controller from Milwaukee. And that position requires a lot of. Very, in my opinion, like very quick thinking, not immediate, but. Listening to what's going on around you, taking input for the things that you have that are happening around you. And then making a quick best decision for things. And if that decision is not great, it would be figuring out what a better solution is in moving forward. I see that in the context of the village trustees, but not the timeline, the timeline is much greater here, you have the ability to. Gather more input, you have the ability to maybe talk to the village staff about what impact something could impact. What the impacts of things would be to come to the best decision and move forward. And that, like I said in my previous career there, that that's a really short timeframe, that could be minutes or an hour. Whereas I see the village board position as being gathering that input and making decisions could be. A two week timeline, a three day timeline, so it allows you to make a better decision and gather more input.
Um, I think we've in the past had the candidates still back into the room.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't believe.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry about that, Andrew.
No problem.
It's just the, we don't do this every. So I do, again, thank you so much for coming, it's 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 great to have people who want to be involved in the government. One of the biggest challenges the village board that faces us is control of role. Probably you approach the issue of determining appropriate for your role, any services required to support that role?
Well, as I said in my essay, I I look at the village trustee job as being a very important one and that responsibility portion of it being the fact that you're. Making input, making decisions for thirteen thousand residents and being only a a six member board and with a president, that's a very. You have to be very open and have your ear to the ground as well as be able to take comments from the public and things like that to move forward with really good decisions. In the past, I believe the village board and the presidents have done a very good job of. The growth in Grafton, it still has that small community feel, but it has a lot of amenities. Right now, I think you're kind of experiencing a little bit of. I would say growing pains, the probably the forefront one, in in my opinion, is like the E M, the EMS issue here in town. There there has to be at some point in time. That step in population and service where you may have to look at this needs to be a full time service rather than. Trying to do paid on call and and kind of a a group of full time, a group of part time and a group of paid on call may have to make a transition that way. The idea of combining with Sockville may be helpful, it might not be, but I would have to look at more of the. The metrics of that, if you will, but as far as controlling growth, I think the 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 probably the biggest issue Grafton has now would be to make room. Perhaps for industry, it seems like we have a lot of residential growth going on and opportunities for people to get space and build new houses. There seems to be an opportunity for growth with the apartment structure that's going on in the village now, moving forward, that there'll be more. Space for people who are interested in renting or more space for people who are interested in building. But I have a concern, I guess, of Grafton turning towards a bedroom community. Because if you don't have an industrial base or a job base in town, that. That would, that would make you be just kind of a commuter location, and that maybe doesn't lead itself to having citizens that are responsible in the community or want to. Improve the community, they just like it for the things, the amenities that are there and congratulate you obviously for doing those amenities. And just moving forward, but it doesn't really, maybe it doesn't increase and involve citizens. So that, so I see that the the grow, the balance of growth here for Grafton, I think residentially, it's it's okay, I think they need to start, you need to start looking at industrial. To get people that are live in the community, work in the community. And as far as commercial, I think there's a lot of availability for commercial yet and. Maybe a little bit more focus on the the north end of the downtown area towards the highway sixty end because of. You know, the look possibly getting more. Stores in that area on that end of it, as opposed to the South Commercial District, which seems to be kind of redeveloping on its own, it seems to be. Filling back out again, so.
Thank you.
Hello, Andrew, welcome.
Thank you.
If appointed to the trustee position, what do you see as the biggest problem or challenge that the village faces in the coming year? And B, how would you solve it?
Well, as I previously mentioned, I think the near term biggest challenge is EMS service. And the way I, the way I would foresee. Kind of revamping that is obviously working with the the fire department, and I think there needs to be a transition more to a. Like a daytime where there's a daytime crew of firefighters, so like. Just laying it out on the table, I would say like it would be Monday through Saturday, six A M. to six P M. You could have five people, three days a week, each group of people, and then maybe some people that would fill in. So that you would have like daytime coverage, six A M. to six P M. every day, that would be actual responders that are at the station ready to go. And then outside of that envelope, you would bolster that by having either. Like a paramedic that's on overnight, that's just that, that's initial response to something, and then the ambulance crews paged in. That that I see as the upfront, short term. Issue in my mind, a little bit. Uh, in my mind, a little bit, uh, police response is the next because again. We're growing residents and growing residents causes calls for service. And then right behind that for me is. Uh, the street department because as you add subdivisions, you add roads. So you add stuff that you have to take care of, plowing snow, uh, cutting grass in a park that you may have required them to build. Um, those types of things, all that maintenance. So again, those things kind of. Line themselves up. To get a plan in advance that. As you're going to continue to grow and add more residents that you. Add the services that you need that are essential to move forward. To serve the citizen well. Thank you.
Hi, Andrew. I'm Andrew Kappen and um, thanks for your interest. Uh, if you could change one thing in the village, what would it be?
Our funds unlimited in this change. Uh, if, if funding was unlimited in this change. Um. I would say looking at finding a way of bypassing Grafton. For traffic that is not destined to Grafton. Uh, for example, so highway sixty to find a way of bypassing highway sixty around the village of Grafton. Again, that. The state highway generates traffic and by generating traffic, people coming through town. It gets people interested in, oh, this is a neat community. Oh, they have nice shopping or all that. It gets people interested. But uh, straightforward, for example, trucking, I'm running a truckload of things from Milwaukee to Jackson. I'm driving through Grafton. I don't need to drive through Grafton. It would be great if I could go around Grafton. And I think that in itself would be an interesting thought to look at. Um, to kind of lower and calm the traffic in the, on the highway sixty corridor. Especially the Port Washington Highway sixty corridor that kind of is a destination spot. And then kind of the calming again of the traffic at. Uh, Washington and Wisconsin in the downtown area. Those are, I think if you could find a way of. Getting the traffic to move around, that's just bypassing traffic or moving through. I think that that would be helpful. But again, there's, there's that fine line that you walk between. That's a. Uh, then you get people that are just traveling through that don't ever see the town, but don't stop. Or don't visit village businesses, so. So I think that I would look at that and go, that might be something interesting. Again. If funds were unlimited. Um. As far as limiting, i- if limited funds are available and you're looking at just. Trying to do. Just something to visually improve the village. Again, I would look at that. I'm looking at the intersection of highway sixty and. Um, the downtown highway sixty in Wisconsin where you're looking at. Um. That, that area there to revitalize that area. Now, there's been a little bit of development that's revitalized, but. I'm talking about stretching down towards the South Commercial District. Trying to find a way of making that. You know, maybe giving grants to building owners to make the buildings a little bit more attractive. Um, doing a better job of maintaining the street trees. Those types of things. Uh, and again, that just to make the, that area more attractive that you get people to stop and enjoy some of the stuff that's in the village.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out tonight, Andrew.
Thank you.
What organization of Grafton you volunteer for to go on?
Um. Previously, I've been uh, very involved in St. Paul Lutheran Church in Grafton. Um, I was on the Board of Elders, the school board. I was the chairman of the school board for three years. Um, I'm the, I'm the most recent past president of the congregation. Uh, I did that for seven years at the, oh, at St. Paul. Um. There's kind of a history of service in my, in my family. Um, my father was a fire chief in a volunteer fire department. Uh, I have two uncles that were mayors. And uh, so I mean, I just look at it and say. Uh, that's what I was talking about when I talked to Lisa about my commitments. My commitments have ended. So I'm looking for what's the next commitment or what's the next project that? I can lend my skill set or my help to. And I looked at this and went, like I said, this is a very interesting opportunity. To get involved, to see what it's all about and to perhaps make a. You know, a difference in the betterment of Grafton.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, take the podium.
Um, so in closing, what would you say? In a short, hard time, um, kind of wrap this up for us?
In closing, I'd like to say. Um, I think I could lend my skills to. Being a helpful trustee. Uh, my time commitment is such that I think I could. Manage the time commitment with my, my current job responsibilities and, and what I'm doing that. I would have the time commitment to. Meet at basically in the afternoons and evenings, any day of the week, as long as known ahead of time can make that happen. Um, I don't have any other. Commitments in the, in uh, as far as. Government or administration or volunteerism commitments that I have right now, so that I would be devoting my entire effort and time. To, to this uh, opportunity. So I think that that's important. Um. I've been living in Grafton for more than twenty years, really enjoy it. And think you're going in the right direction. Overall, and so that's why I want to be kind of be a part of it. And, and help Grafton move forward and be even a better place.
Okay.
So that's your, thank you.
Hello, everyone. Welcome. Thank you.
You have your.
My pleasure to be here as well. Thank you. Hello, Ms. Thank you.
So I want to start off with a question for you. So Clark, why did you choose to interview for the village trustee position now but not submit your name for placement on the ballot during the April election?
Sure. So I'll take the first part of that question and use that to dovetail into the second part there. Um, so my wife and I have lived here in Grafton for ten years. We truly love the village. We came here as part of my job, uh, taking me from out of state here to Wisconsin and honestly, we couldn't see ourselves living anywhere else. We're drawn by the interurban trail as well as our church, which is in the town of Grafton here. And immediately after getting here, we had a nice Sunday afternoon in Lime Kiln Park. And then right after moving, we were in the downtown area for the year to Grafton in twenty thirteen. So we truly love this community. It's where we've chosen to uh, grow our family. And I'm really excited about this opportunity to use my talents to come alongside each of you all to help the village be a great place to live, to work and to play. Really quality life naturally, as the village's motto says. The time period coming up here is an exciting one within the village. There's a lot of new development taking place, both residential and commercial throughout the village. But there are challenges that lie ahead. The cost of maintaining essential services such as roads, fire EMS. Continues to pose challenges that are going to become more acute within the next couple of years. And so recognizing that those challenges are going to require excellent leadership to be able to help address. You of six, I believe, are excellent leaders along with the village's staff, but I want to be able to help. Uh, you all with my talents, my perspectives to be able to address those collaboratively together. I did not submit my name for the April election largely because my wife and I welcomed our first child into the world, Lucas, just before Thanksgiving. And so we're first time parents. Our families both live out of town, out of town, out of state. Uh, my wife's in Nebraska, mine in Florida. And so it was an adjustment period, those first month, two months, three months or so. And that was the vital time of circulating nomination papers and then starting the actual campaign process. Which just was not in a position to be able to do so. I've considered putting my name for election for the last several years and I've been actively tracking village operations ever since I first volunteered on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan Committee in twenty fifteen. But now that we have settled into a routine, Lucas is nearly six months old, happy, healthy baby boy. Uh, I have much more time and much more resources to be able to devote to this, not just to do the bare minimum, but to serve with excellence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, or. Thanks for coming out today and thank you for the nice sunny weather.
Yes, whatever it is, I didn't do it unless you like it, in which case I'll take.
So, um. How to trust you here? What, what skills, knowledge, expertise can you bring to this position to help us be even better? Proof than we are.
Certainly. So I'm an experienced leader with a proven track record of creating, developing, implementing and evaluating initiatives within budget constrained environments. So I've had the opportunity to develop, implement and evaluate over five million dollars of research and education budgets at UWM. In my role as a researcher as well as an atmospheric science program chairperson. I've also is a trustee of the USS Liberty Memorial Public Library here in the village, had the opportunity to review multiple years worth of budgets totaling over three million dollars during that time period. I think my greatest skill is my ability to critically evaluate large off time, oftentimes disparate information. And be able to understand its strengths and weaknesses and then work collaboratively with others to be able to chart the best possible course forward. I consider myself to be an excellent listener. I'm also very diligent. I'm highly detail oriented. Uh, perfectionist, perhaps almost to a fault at times, and I'm very conscientious in all my dealings with uh, other people. I also am very adept at being able to distill complex information, often technical information into easy to understand language. That's part of what I have to do as part of my career as an atmospheric scientist. Uh, disseminate technical information in ways that people can actually do something with it. And so I consider myself very good at that, uh, both for government entities, but also for members of the public. I've been very fortunate to have held a number of leadership positions within my profession as well as within the community. Uh, as I mentioned, I'm the chairperson of UWM's Atmospheric Science Program and I've held that role for eight years. For my service at UWM and to the broader community at, in the university setting, I was one of three recipients of UWM's Faculty University Service Award in twenty twenty one. I also currently hold three leadership positions within a professional society, the American Meteorological Society. Which boasts in the five digits, uh, number of members across the United States and across the world. Of those leadership positions, the most relevant is Commissioner of its Scientific and Technological Activities Commission. Which oversees thirty six boards and committees, uh, charged with advancing the scientific mission of the American Meteorological Society. So not unlike what you'd see here within the village where the village board sits above a number of other boards and committees. Um, I've also had the opportunity to serve as the library board's vice president for the last uh, nine months or so. And my wife and I are co-leaders of the marriage mentoring or premarital counseling program that's in your church within the town of Grafton. And so for my service here, uh, in the, in my profession as well as with the public. I learned just about a week and a half ago that I'll be one of three recipients of UWM's distinguished uh, public service award for twenty twenty three. So I think it's my extensive uh, leadership record with a number of skills that um. Relating to bringing people together, organizing ideas and charting the course forward that I think is what I would be able to bring to the table here.
Thank you very much.
I thank you.
Hello, Clark.
Hi, Jim.
And welcome. And it's been a pleasure to serve with you on library board. Two separate occasions.
Likewise, as well as with trustee left.
One of the biggest challenges village board faces is that of control of growth. How would you approach the issue of determining appropriate rate of growth? And the services required to support that goal?
Certainly. And I'll preface by indicating that there are some things outside of the village's control, I believe. Uh, the national and global economy, for instance, and broader market forces. And make it difficult to pinpoint a specific rate to say, all right, I think that it should be three percent annual growth versus say five percent annual growth. But more broadly speaking, or more specifically speaking, I should say. Here in the village, I think that um, not every type of growth requires the same amount in the way of new services. There are a number of infill redevelopment opportunities here within the village. We've seen that in the South Commercial District with the lanes, big lots, as well as uh, Harbor Freights opening soon or recently opening. As well as other properties such as the Ayler's property nearby there, the Triangle Property. Um, and others uh, that you all have considered and that are part of the village's comprehensive plan in terms of priority infill redevelopment sites. The infrastructure for those is largely already in place and so there's not as much in the way of. Maintenance of new roadways, new sewer and water lines that are necessary for those types of developments as compared to altogether new development. And so my philosophy in terms of uh, this type of growth is largely. Prioritizing infill redevelopment and I think the comprehensive plan does a great job of outlining where those locations are. And those all help to grow the village's tax base. They reduce white and they ultimately help to minimize costs. I think in addition to that, the thoughtful process that the village has from the initial reviews by staff leading into a concept plan with the plan commission. And then ultimately with the village board, as well as the final reviews with the plan commission with the village board and sometimes also the architectural review board. With public involvement throughout the process helps to ensure that what growth does take place here, what new development takes place here. Is often thoughtful and responsive to what the people of the village ultimately want to see here. And I think as well, having the village require developers to be able to contribute to the cost of the um. Growth, not just on what's happening on their properties, but where it affects other services within the village. And a good example, I think of this would be the signalization improvement set falls in port roads as well as in front of lanes. Uh, that will ultimately come online within the next couple of years as development proceeds. Things that the growth will cause the need for that would otherwise pose a significant financial burden on the village that can be offloaded from the village's taxpayers. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Clark. Thanks. Uh, thanks for your interest.
Thank you.
If appointed to the trustee position, what do you see as the biggest problem or challenge the village faces in the coming years? And how would you solve or deal with it?
Yes. So I think the biggest challenge that the villages, village faces is one that I kind of alluded to in my first question response. The cost of being able to provide municipal services, essential services such as. Uh, water, sewer, roads, as well as fire and EMS. Cause right now, the rate at which the village is replacing roadways is about a mile, a little over a mile every year. And with over fifty miles of roads within the village, that means it's going to be about fifty years before all of the roadways can be replaced. They have a lifespan on the order of about thirty years. So you get a large number of failing roads at the longer time period for all of that. Fire and EMS is being assisted through ARPA funding from the county that is going to lapse within the next couple of years or so. So finding a way to be able to address the impending financial challenges associated with maintaining our roads and maintaining fire EMS will be essential. I think that for fire EMS in particular, the ongoing consolidation talks with Sockville. And depending on what happens with the state budget cycle with some potential funding. Uh, for municipalities that are looking at consolidating municipal services. Possibly might bring some others back to the table that have gone away from the table. I think we'll have the potential to help maintain services while reducing administrative and infrastructure costs. I think that continuing to advocate with our legislators as well as our executives of both political parties to help them to understand the challenges that. A community like Grafton and many others like us ultimately face because. Even if there is additional funding in the state budget to be able to address these issues, so they're not going to be able to solve everything. And my impression is that the village's budgets are pretty lean without a ton of fluff within them. And the challenge is people like most everything that the village has been able to provide to them. The surveys that the village and the village board have conducted over many years. Indicates a high degree of satisfaction. So continuing to look for efficiencies in uh, the services that we provide. While continuing to advocate for more state aid, given the strict uh, levy limits that are imposed upon the village, I think will be paramount to beginning to address some of these issues.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out, Clark. And uh. If you could change one thing in the village, what would it be and why?
Sure. I'll say that I really like a lot of what we have here within the village. I think it is truly an excellent place to live. I think what I would advocate for is continued improvements to the walkability or pedestrian accessibility here within the village. I think there's strong public support for that. We happen to have a number of residents from the heritage settlement community here uh, earlier today. As well as at Public Works last week, Monday. And we had successful advocacy back last year for pedestrian crossway improvements in front of Centennial Park as well as at Cedar Drive and Falls Road. So I think that there's a lot of resident interest in something relatively small, but that can have a large impact on both perceived and realized safety. Uh, as they move about the village and getting more people out onto our sidewalks into our communities. Helps with getting people to our businesses, helps them to see and. Helps with getting people to our businesses, helps them to see and take advantage of all that this community has to offer. And so looking at ways in which that might be able to be addressed would be continuing to facilitate some of those crosswalk types of improvements. Areas such as in front of the high school, which has been a longstanding issue. As well as say at Green Bay and Falls Roads, both by the river and over by Lion Kiln Park, where there is some existing infrastructure. But there is also a lot of traffic and some people might not necessarily feel safe within that area. Continuing to look at speeds within the village, I recognize that the police department has limited resources. But I'll admit it was eye opening to learn last year that the speed enforcement threshold on a lot of the resident residential streets. Such as Falls Road is thirty seven in the twenty five zone. So if we could consider looking at ways of maybe knocking that down just a little bit so that the rate at which cars are traveling through there is not quite as fast and again. The most vulnerable users, families, individuals and others. Feel a little bit safer, I think would be just a nice improvement to the quality of life that we have here within the village.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. So thank you.
Thanks for coming out. What organizations in Grafton do you volunteer for?
Sure, so I currently volunteer for the village as a member of its library board, which I've served on since two thousand and sixteen. I'm currently the second longest tenured member on the board. I have been the vice president since last September. I previously served on the village's Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan Committee back in two thousand and fifteen, which was my first experience with the village just two years after moving to the village. I also have and continue to volunteer for my church, Vineyard Church in the town of Grafton. I was the communion organizer there for four years from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and nineteen. Organizing the weekly event of communion during all of the church services. And my wife and I, as I noted, are co-leaders of the Marriage Mentoring or Premarital Counseling Curriculum. We helped to develop the curriculum that is currently being used there based off of one of John Gottman's books. And we actively worked alongside one other couple to facilitate anybody who's getting married or. Anybody who's just looking for enrichment for their marriage, working through that curriculum.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any final statements that you'd like to make?
Sure, and I'll keep this relatively brief. I appreciate the opportunity to interview with you all here today. I hope I've been able to convey the passion that I feel and the excitement that I have about potentially coming alongside you all to serve as the next trustee. And if I'm selected, I do pledge to serve with humility. Recognizing the trust that you all have placed in me and that the residents of the village have placed in me and would hopefully continue to place in me. I would serve with collegiality, viewing you all as valued partners, as well as the staff and the residents of the village. In helping to make this place a great place to live and to work and to play. And I would also serve with excellence. I feel like I've demonstrated my commitment to that through a number of opportunities, both within the community as as well as within the profession. And it would start tomorrow as I would reach out to all of the village department heads, as well as other groups within the community, to start to arrange the process of meeting with them. I recognize that I have a lot to learn and I'm eager to begin listening and understanding just what matters to everybody more than I've had the opportunity to do so. So I thank you all for your time, and if you all have any further questions of me, I'm happy to answer them. But I wish you all the best as this process continues to play out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I know a lot of the history of the village. I can go back and remember when there was a four way stop at twelfth and sixty where. You know, with one lane going in each direction are not not a lot of people still in the community that remember that. So it's so having the some of that history. And the experience of being a trustee will go, you know, will go a long way.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Welcome and thanks for your interest. One of the biggest challenges the village board faces is that of controlled growth. How would you approach the issue of determining appropriate rate of growth in the services required to support?
Basically, controlled growth is. It's it's an issue whenever there's a new development in the village. Obviously, the village has been growing quite rapidly over the last couple of years with a lot of developments coming in. I know there's a few other ones that are going to be in front of the plan commission here very soon. That'll be a higher density that are going through and each project has to be. Gone through on its own merits. They need to go through all the different departments to make sure that we have the resources to be able to to do that. If it comes down to the point where. A development wants to come in and we just don't have, whether it be the infrastructure or the personnel to maintain new, you know. A bunch of new roads or miles of new roads, depending on the development. You know, we need there's a village, you know, not be afraid to say no, we just can't handle this at the moment. Or if it comes in, we need to find a way to. You know, make the infrastructure we need work, whether it be hiring new people, which isn't always the easiest to do.
Thank you.
If appointed to the trustee position, what do you see as the biggest problem or challenge that the village faces in the coming years? How would you solve it or deal with it?
Obviously, probably the one of the biggest things coming up is gonna is gonna be development, obviously. Grafton has a lot of renewed interest, and so there's been a lot of new development coming in. And so far, it's been a lot of residential development. So it's, you know, that's probably going to be the one of the biggest issues is going to be working with. Again, a lot of the village departments to make sure we can cover the new infrastructure. It's gonna be working with the school district to make sure that they can, they have the classrooms to be able to, you know, to do this. You know, so that's going to be a big issue. And then once we start bringing in. A lot of residential, then we're going to have a lot of commercial growth that's going to follow along with it. And again, it's maintaining it the same way granted. Commercial development doesn't create, you know, we don't need classrooms for commercial development. But again, it's an infrastructure cost that, you know, there may be roads put in, there's obviously going to be sewer and water. You know, and utilities that need to be installed and, you know, we got to make sure that we can maintain that.
Thank you.
Hello.
If you could change one thing in the village.
Probably the the biggest thing and then as my, you know, term is when I was on it as a trustee is. In the past, we've gotten rid of too much of our history. We probably should have done a little bit better job maintaining some of our. Historic buildings and final found a way to make them blend in with the new development and so just leveling the buildings.
What organizations in Grafton do you volunteer for?
Well, there's quite a few. But probably, probably the one that most people are know of is the Gala Park Concert Series. I've been part of that for twenty years and have been in charge of it for the last roughly sixteen years. I'm a member of the Grafton Lions Club. I'm even I'm not an active member, I am a member of the Sons of the American Legion Post. I helped for. I'm trying, I'm so many years I don't remember with the Grafton Christmas Parade in the with the Grafton Chamber. I've been a volunteer with the fire department since two thousand and fifteen. I was going back, I I've been out of it for a while, but for twenty years I was a volunteer leader with the four H Club in Ozaki County. I think I I finally I hit my twenty years, I think in two thousand and eighteen and decided to retire from that, so. I want to thank all of you for for serving. It's, you know, from my experience, it's a thankless job. You you tend to get a lot more complaints than you do compliments for doing it. So, you know, again, I've always applauded those who are willing to step up and be put in the public light. To do this job and. You know, and want to thank you guys, you know, for allowing me to come in and interview for it and, you know, hope that you guys will pick me, so. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Not sure I'll need the microphone. Thank you.
So why did you choose to interview for the village trustee position? But did not submit your name for placement on the ballot in April?
Well, the reason why I'm interested in the position. Is that last year in October or so, I got involved in the Triangle Project. As a resident, working with my neighbors and community members in. Basically protesting the development that was taking place or was being planned for that area next to my neighborhood. So that lighted a fire in me. And I wanted to, I realized that. There was something that I could do from my point of view as a resident. And I did what I could to kind of rally the troops and educate my neighbors and my community members on. The process that is followed in the village. And the details of the project pointing out in a very. Non disparaging way, but in a way that. I think influenced people to understand that, yeah, this is not right for the village, it's not right for our immediate community and neighborhood and. So thankfully, we were successful on the first round of pushing back on that. And I'm also at a point in my life right now where I can take the time. And I can, I'm not no longer working two jobs as I did for thirty two years. And I have the time to commit to this kind of role because it is an intensive. And intense type of position. If you're going to do the job the right way. So I do have the personal time to commit to it now, so. That's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you.
Welcome, Marie.
Thank you.
For your interest. What will you bring as far as skills, knowledge, expertise to the position?
Well, I've worked closely with people from all walks of life in both my career. In education, I was an instructor at M E T C for thirty two years. In the evening school and teaching mathematics to adults who. Were trying to return to school and butter their lives. I am a very committed and resourceful individual. I learn quickly. I think I have a pretty strong mental acuity to learn things that I never learned or understood or had ever been experienced. Had experience in before, so I can learn new things quickly. I also am. A person who has managed people, projects and programs, so I understand the role of process, following process. And listening and being open to new. Ways of thinking and solving problems. I do problem solving every single day on my job at Harley Davidson. And so I'm very experienced at that and been told I'm very good at it. And I think one of the more important aspects of my personality and working in. With others is that I have a, I've been told and I believe I have a good sense of humor. And a good sense of the ridiculous. So that helps, I found that in my life to be very beneficial when dealing. With stressful or difficult circumstances or challenging circumstances, so. I know we have a lot of challenges here in the village. And hopefully, along with the serious aspect. We can have some levity when when appropriate, so I can contribute that way too.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. One of the biggest challenges in the village. That the village board faces is that of controlled growth. How would you approach the issue of determining appropriate rate of growth? And the services required to support that growth?
Well, since I have never worked in a government environment. One of the things that I would do is I would go directly to the village Grafton's. Comprehensive plan for two thousand and thirty five. It's filled with a lot of data. That has already been analyzed and. I would look at that and also do some research on my own, appropriate to the topic of. Growth development. I would listen to what my fellow residents have to say. I would read and. I would, I would basically do the research that needs to be done to get the right data to make. The appropriate decision for the growth and in growth development. You know, it's, it's hard to say what. The complexity of the situation is until you actually get. Into the details. So on the surface level, I can tell you that I'll do my homework. I'll do it well. And I'm committed to. Listening to the residents of the village about what. What they need and what they want and then being able to. Way the pros and cons and be decisive. And do what I can to positively influence. And do what I can to positively influence the best outcome for them.
Thank you.
Hi, Marie. And thanks for coming.
Sure.
For having an interest. If I pointed into the village trustee positions, what do you see as the biggest problem or challenge that the village faces in the upcoming years? And how would you solve that or deal with it?
I would say the, probably the biggest problem and, and, you know, it's no news to anybody, I think, is that you have competing interests and limited amount of funds. I guess maybe that's the most succinct way of saying it. And it all boils down to money. We have certain amount of tax dollars that we can spend on numerous projects and numerous essential services that we need to provide to our community. And I think there are a couple elements to that that I think I would be able to contribute to and that is make sure that you're meeting the essentials that as best as you can within your budget for the people. But then also listen to find out what the residents actually think the priorities are. I mean, we, we're supposed to be representative of our residents. So we need to, we really have to listen to the residents. And when you know how much money that you have to spend, you obviously have to prioritize and what some people's priority priorities are, are not the priorities of the person sitting next to them. So and you're gonna disappoint people. And I think that's one of the hard parts about the job is delivering the message in a transparent way, in a way that is relatable to the general public. And although you may, let's say, disappoint people by your decisions that you make as a board member because, you know, they want something that's just not a priority for the community at the time. To be able to deliver those messages to people in a way that still engenders trust that they feel that the people that are on the board are working in their best interest. And they understand that we've not left any stones unturned. And we've investigated and researched and gathered data and made a concerted decision that this is the best thing at this time for the village. And that the people in the village understand that and, and, and that engenders trust. When you have that kind of sincerity with the people you work with and for.
Hi, Marie.
Hi.
If you could change one thing in the village, what would it be and why?
Well, I'm, I'm sure there are a lot of very important things that I could, you know, think of to change, but I, I, as a resident, like I said, that got ignited last summer or last fall rather over the Triangle Project that affected my neighborhood. I'd have to say that one of the things I'd like to see happen is better engagement of our community in the elements or objectives that we're trying to reach as a governing body working for the public. And that might be town halls, that might be we have quarterly meetings with residents by ward, let's say, divided by ward and have meetings where we're in an informal setting. People can ask questions and we can ask them the questions like Steve Jobs often asks during meetings. What's on your mind? I, I read recently that that was one of his opening remarks in almost every meeting he had. What's on your mind? And that helps with collaboration, it helps with creativity, innovation. It helps bring new ideas to the forefront. Maybe a different color slant on a, on an objective that we're trying to reach that we would have maybe never, ever thought about. Because it's more of a collective gathering of intelligence, so to speak. And that creative element from the public, coming from the public, I think is very important. So I would like to see more engagement from the community with, to help the board make decisions that are right for them.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Marie. Just a final question, I pulled some statements here.
Sure.
What organizations and grafts do you volunteer for?
I am a resident participant in the Joint County Library Planning Committee for Ozaki County.
Thank you.
So Marie, we have just one more for you and this is kind of for you. A closing statement for us, tell us, tell us why we need to have you on our board.
Well, I think it helps to understand who I am. I grew up in a small town called Saint Johns, Michigan, North Lansing, the capital. I'm a daughter of a Michigan State policeman and a mother who was a, one of the first people in the Federal Weather Bureau right after World War Two. And their lives were dedicated to service to their community, their state and to us as kids. And I want to be, I have very fond memories of Saint Johns, Michigan, that small town, very much like Grafton. One of the reasons why I moved to Grafton twenty-seven years ago is because it reminded me of Saint Johns and I had such great memories of that, of the quality of life there, where neighbors cared about one another, where you didn't hesitate to ask a neighbor to help out your aging parents when you weren't available and living out of state. And where people kindly characters like Mrs. Wilson, one of our neighbors, would grab all of our balls that we would, baseballs that we'd hit over into her yard and she'd keep a big full box of them. And she did that, we realized later, so that we would come over and ask for them and apologize and then she could serve as a piece of her famous peach pie that she had, that everybody in, in the city or town of Saint Johns knew about. So that kind of legacy, I'd like to leave those kinds of memories and legacy available to our, our future generation of kids out there so that they can think fondly back on their hometown, Grafton and have the same kind of sentiments that I have today at my age. And because I'm committed to that, that form of service now because my past life and working two jobs is over. And now I'd like to dedicate my passion and my interests and talents elsewhere, and I think this is a great place to do it in. So I, I want to thank all of you for your service to our community. And thank you for hearing me tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
Leave our next step here, I am just, if I
Correct. I, at this point, I would actually turn it over to Attorney Herbrand. As he's been designated for, I guess, the election portion of the process, if you will.
Just to bring to your, to the village's resolution of ninety-seven for fulfilling a vengeance, you know. Talk amongst yourselves, you could call back to candidates if you want to ask a follow-up question. Otherwise, yes, we're at that point where we start tallying the votes. But the, but the policy provides is that once a candidate has received a majority of the votes, that that candidate would be eligible for a motion to appoint, of course, because here she has a majority. And if we can't reach that point, we would the policy provides we would remove the lowest vote getter and just continue to vote.
Okay, so let's refine this already, list our preferences, one, two, three, four, five, or a single preference?
I think you would just list a single preference at this point. And we ask that you please write your names on your ballot. It is a, it's a paper ballot, but you can have a secret ballot, so. So I have tallied up the votes. Andrew Schwartz received two votes. Clark Evans received three votes. Marie McCall received one vote. That would be the one, the one has the majority. Stage.
Second round.
Second round of voting, so.
Among those three.
I mean, your, your policy would provide that those receiving the least number of votes will no longer be considered a candidate. And additional balloting continues, is in the same process until one candidate receives a majority of the votes cast, that's your policy. Yes, yes, you have the vote getters, or the, yes, Andrew Schwartz has two votes. Clark Evans has three votes. Marie McCall has, I don't know, I'm not saying anything, but has one vote. So I think we would vote amongst those three at the stage.
Yes, if you want, I have one, I got it, that way.
Good, okay.
Are we, Mike, are we, what are we choosing from the top three or the bottom? Just choosing, yeah, you're selecting one candidate from the top three, Andrew Schwartz, Clark Evans. So this, this round of balloting, Andrew Schwartz has three votes. Clark Evans has two votes. Marie McCall has one vote. So same candidates typically solved, no, no, no majority. Yeah, you would, you would, following the same, the same procedure, the individual receiving the least number of votes would no longer be considered. So then we're leaving it to Andrew Schwartz and Clark Evans. Okay, this, this round of voting, Andrew Schwartz received three votes, Clark Evans received three votes.
All right, I, I think that we want to go ahead with the third, another round of voting here. Um, at that point, um, well, I'll see what our next set of those might. I, I, I think we, one other questions we certainly can ask is if either you wish to withdraw your name from the ballot. It's, it's certainly something that you can do, but it does not require. Better than all, thank you.
Next round of voting is, uh, tied vote. Schwartz with three, and Evans with three. Well, um, you know, your policy says, uh, we just keep voting, or you can entertain, but you're not supposed to entertain a vote until someone has a majority. We're basically in a deadlock. Um, short of someone changing their vote.
So are, would there possibly be other options? We're, we're gonna stick with our vote, stick with our vote, stick with our vote, because that's what we feel, you know, take our family vote. Go on to a, put the two names in a hat, and we need it to be that simple, it really do. Well, Dr. Larry Dan said something about.
Yeah, I.
But that, yeah, that should have happened at the beginning of everything, when we would. No, I mean.
What's this, what's the procedure if he pulls his? Whoa, is that okay? Well, uh,
There's no policy.
There's no policy, yeah, we're sort of breaking from the policy, but, uh, the policy just calls for continued votes, and I don't know that if, uh, withdrawing your vote is probably the same as changing your vote.
Another question asked from the candidates? Could another question be asked from the candidates?
We don't have any prepared questions, but it's an idea.
Well, I think, I think a fair question, I, I think a fair question might be, you know, both of you did have both the statements. And, um, you know, make what we do, asking for a round of voting, say, if it's live, you should perhaps, both of us can avoid. For you, so them to approve and then vote. That's unfair enough for the candidates who wants to then have a.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have, so, you know, maybe you have a three minute, three minute presentation that tells why you could vote for it. Would that be fair enough, Mike, do you think that would work? Would you, if you don't, if you wanted to do that? So, okay, thank you. So, um, let's see here, I think Andrew was first, uh, one of the first contributors, so he would have, he would have the first, first honor, correct?
Yes, Mr. Schwartz is listed first, and that was by the random draw to establish, uh, the order of papers.
So, uh, why don't we look down on where you give a three minute presentation and, uh, Clark, two minutes one.
Well, needless to say, because we're in this predicament, I don't have a prepared statement that I'm reading from, so, um, I would, I would direct you, your, your thoughts to my application and the, the reasoning that I put um, on my application as to why I would like to serve the village as a trustee. Um, I think my leadership roles at Saint Paul have, uh, prepared me to be a, a very good part as far as being a good listener. Um, using my common sense, and again, you, you have to rub that up against the fact that uh, there are a lot of needs, limited revenue, and a lot of different directions that uh, people may want to sway someone in, but again, I think you have to look at, uh, the whole aspect of uh, what's best for the village of Grafton, uh, as opposed to what's best for any individual. Uh, you, as a collectively as a group, you, you are a small group of people that cut the cross section of thirteen thousand residents. So I think everything that you do has to be, um, thoughtful, um, well-prepared, and when you bring an idea before the public of something, uh, it really has to be, uh, fleshed out very well as to whether that be direction or, uh, dealing with something that's a spur of the moment. Um, I think, as I said before, I think, uh, the people before you on the village trustees, as well as the village president, have done an excellent job of growing the village, of keeping that family feel in the village, and yet still attracting uh, very big and, uh, amenities that draw other people that may be residents of other communities to come here, uh, to shop at one of those big venues, and then they, uh, go downtown to have some lunch, or they find a smaller thing that they really like, and that may drive them to go, hey, look, I should probably look at Grafton as a place to live, because it's a great place to live. So I think all those things play into it. Um, there are challenges ahead, again, with growth, I think, uh, I expressed some of those earlier in my statements, but I, I think that, again, it, think thoughtful growth is important. Um, what's best for the village as opposed to what's best for any individual on the board, or perhaps someone who's bending your ear. Uh, you have to be available for input from, from everybody. Um, be little person, big person, whatever it might be. And I think that that's very important to have a listening ear, to have common sense, and to make the best decision, and that would be my skills that I bring forward to the board of trustees. Thank you very much.
Welcome back, Clark.
Thank you, President Loret, and thank you for breaking in. I am on, all right. Well, thank you all again for the opportunity to meet with you all, I recognize this is the gravity of this, uh, deliberation. I just need to bring him a little closer, okay? Just a little bit better, great. So again, thank you all for having me here to be able to interview with you all, I recognize the gravity of this decision that you all are making, and I appreciate your consideration throughout this entire process, however it may ultimately turn out. Uh, Mr. Schwartz is a highly qualified individual, and, um, I'm sure would be able to serve the village well if he were to be the one selected, I also believe that I would be able to serve the village well if I'm the one who is ultimately selected. I can assure you all this, no one will work harder on behalf of the village than I will. No one will be a bigger advocate for the village than I will. Whatever that ultimately looks like, whatever challenges may face us, whether it be, God forbid, hopefully nothing like what we saw with COVID in the last three years or so, or something more benign that we are well aware of, whether it be maintaining roads, fire EMS, or other challenges here within the village. No one will work harder on behalf of the village, no one will, uh, be a greater advocate for the village than I will be. So I thank you all for your consideration, and, uh, look forward to seeing how this process ultimately plays out, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more ballot, okay? Okay, Ralph, five, uh, four votes for Clark Evans and two votes for Andrew Schwartz. Right, we're having to entertain a vote, great. I'd like now a motion to appoint Clark Evans to the Grafton Village Board of Trustees, effective upon, they're being sworn in by the village clerk, with the term expiring in April of twenty twenty four. All in favor?
I oppose.
Thank you. Welcome aboard, Clark.
Excellent work, thank you so much, Marie, Dave, and, uh, Mr. O'Brien, thank you so much, uh, you know, we'll certainly keep your name on file for, um, additional, uh, committee appointments that we should, so we'll, uh, so, you know, serving. We have a couple of them open, so we'll be reaching out to you.
And, and there was an election in April, so please consider that.
Thank you very much.
So President, I think the motion that we just made.
I'll make a motion to second, uh, I'll second the motion to destroy the ballots.
Yes, three teams of ballots. We have four, records, tension.
Oh, yes.
It has open records.
We're gonna move that motion, and I'll remove the second, and we just want the resolution and ask. Um, I would like to, um, I would like to have a, a motion to table the resolutions for Mr. Colletti and Mr. Bartlett.
I make a motion to table the ballots.
I have a motion in second, on favor, I. Right, uh, that's the resolution, resolution for vacation. Yes, and this continues.
Thank you.
Where public right of way.
Certainly. Let me just have a moment here, um, this should help. Fighting. Actually, Jessica, if I may ask, could you please load, uh, the photo, I will introduce the, uh, topic. Uh, before the village board this evening is a resolution, uh, for the vacation and discontinuance of, uh, public right of way on Eleventh Avenue, um, and Wisconsin Avenue. This is right in the area of the, um, Heinz, what was known as the Heinz fifty seven building. Uh, we have, um, an individual looking to, um, purchase the property, and what we have is a historical situation whereby road construction, right of way mapping versus property lines do not mesh over the course of history. Um, so what we're looking to do is frankly clean up the, um, property lines and the right of way lines, um, through action by the village board and plan commission. And so what we have here is actually a small portion of, um, property being transitioned into right of way, and a small portion of right of way being deeded back to the adjacent property in order to make the, um, parcel shape, in essence, match, uh, best and best represent the building as it sits on the property. Um, this, uh, will go, will be going before the, uh, plan commission on May twenty third, later this month, um, for, uh, action as well. Um, the action requested would be to introduce a resolution for the vacation and discontinuance of one hundred and seventy square feet of public right of way on Eleventh Avenue, and two hundred and five square feet of public right of way on Wisconsin Avenue, and to attach said lands to, um, thirteen twenty five and thirteen twenty seven Wisconsin Avenue. Um, Director Wolf can walk through the, um, uh, photo, or the survey map around there.
Yes, so as Jesse mentioned, there are, um, three areas in question. Um, the, and I will mention also that the, um, current property line that is currently shown on the county's GIS system actually cuts through the southern portion of the building, um, however, um, Nick Faluka, who is, um, interested in, in purchasing the, the building, and so has brought this forward, um, has since, his surveyor has since found an old plat map, which actually pulls the property line south, um, and is this straight line, straight dark line right here. Um, so again, there are two areas that Mr. Faluka is, is requesting be vacated. The first one is, um, along Eleventh Avenue, the entire length of the, the, um, building here, and again, that is actual building footprint, so what he's requesting is for the property line to be to match up with the edge of the building and essentially the sidewalk, so that's the, that's the first area, um, over here along Eleventh. The second area, um, that Mr. Faluka is again requesting to be vacated, um, and added to, um, his future property is, um, right along beach here at the very corner, so it's this hashed area. Um, again, there's no, um, there's no building footprint here, but it is within the, um, sidewalk area, and that is the, um, traditional area where downtown properties would, um, have their property line. And finally, there is a, a very small slice right here with the, um, double cross hatch, um, that is basically sidewalk area that, uh, Mr. Faluka is, um, offering to dedicate as public right of way. Um, so again, this is the sidewalk, and this is definitely within the, the public realm. So those are the, the three areas, um. As Jesse mentioned, the state has, has a very kind of complex process for, um, discontinuation or vacation of, of right of way. This is the first step to introduce the resolution, um, and the village would, would approve that. It would go back to village board for a recommendation, and then it would, after, after waiting forty days, it would come back to village board for a public hearing and a vote consideration.
So I think, I think what you were saying is it comes here and then goes to planning commission.
Right, did I say something, yeah, 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 here, plan commission, back here.
All right, your action tonight, I'm sorry, this, this, as explained, to introduce the resolution, and then ultimately they'll take action on the resolution at a later date.
So with this, we'll need to have a, an offer, a motion in a second.
To introduce it, I, I don't believe you need an offer motion second, it would just be a motion in a second.
So we need a motion to, um, to enter this into discussion, if, uh, if we think, we'll need a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion, I'll second.
The motion in second, any discussion on this? Seems pretty straightforward. All right, so all in favor?
I.
Always. Good. Moving on to the report of the finance committee.
Yes, coming out of the finance committee, the first item coming out of the finance committee is an amendment to the Grafton Municipal Code. Chapter twenty five point oh four in particular with regards to weights and measures and what this ordinance looks to do is really. Housekeeping primarily in nature with regards to updating departmental references, but also references to the state of Wisconsin. The village contract contracts with the state of Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Trading, Consumer Protection for its weights and measures inspection services. The village assesses fees on behalf of the state that to carry out those inspections. And what we're doing is looking here to simply match up our code language with the new state processes and references.
Okay, I think we discussed this at, at finance committee and I think most of your members were here for that. I can do motion and second approve this. Motion in second, any discussion in the saddle? All right, motion in second, all in favor? All right, second.
The next item coming out of the finance committee is acceptance of the annual comprehensive financial report or annual audit. For the year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty two. The finance committee received a presentation by its managing auditor. And the village passed with flying colors once again. With that, I'd like to take a moment to really recognize not only the finance department for all of their hard work. Throughout the year with regards to maintaining our accounting records, to be able to provide those in a concise and orderly manner to the auditors. Whereby there are no questions, comments, or concerns raised, but also to the management team with regards to entering in that initial data. Into the system for finance to take over and provide to the auditors. So overall. Sound fiscal practices here within the village of Grafton and the auditors relayed that message as well.
Great. We'll be needing a motion and a second on that and get the vote.
I'll make the motion.
Second, move motion in second, any discussion on this item? All in favor? I oppose. Did that motion carries?
Last item coming out of the finance committee comes forward to the village board with no recommendation. It is the elected official handbook. This handbook is meant to serve as a guide. To provide a recommendations for best practices for elected officials. As they transition onto the board, but also serve as an ongoing reference. It does note recommendations throughout the book based upon attorney general documentation as well as other community samples. This has been thoroughly vetted at the finance committee level.
Yes, it has. I will look for a motion in second on this.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
The motion in the second, any discussion on this? Yeah, that's.
So again, I'm, I'm gonna vote against it. Don't they think you know why? Like, I, I'm a little. Less likely to agree with page six where it talks about, you know, talking with somebody outside of a notice meeting. We had to have a notice meeting every time we wanted to, you know, ask perfection for another trustee, maybe here three days. So it's for that reason that of course on page four. It does look like one thing was changed and the public safety committee. Saying per section two point one zero point one zero. You feel like representatives? And actually what that code says is. Public Safety Committee shall consist of five members. Three appointed by Village of Grafton Board. And two appointed by the town of Grafton Board. So it doesn't really say anything about representative or trustees. And I know we looked at this going back to twenty thirteen. So that's the other.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I agree. I think we're just kind of sidestepping what's really supposed to happen.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion in a second. We're both here. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Yay.
Okay, show hands. Aye. Thanks. All right, that motion carries for the. All right. Now, all right, John is here. Progress here, reported, sort of public works.
Wrong committee, pardon me. Coming out of the Board of Public Works, we have two items here. The first being a intergovernmental agreement regarding the reconstruction, maintenance and repairs of Columbia Road. By, with the town of Cedarburg. The town of Cedarburg is reconstructing a stretch of Columbia Road. Small portions of that road do fall within village jurisdiction as the boundary is a bit sawtooth in that area. So that being said, an intergovernmental agreement is being brought forward. It was vetted by Board of Public Works and comes forward with their recommendation. With regards to this agreement, which does set forth a. A cost share, but also other terms with regards to roles and responsibilities with regards to this project.
Quick question here. I'll make it, you had a chance to look at this.
Yes.
Any suggestions at all or we?
No, it's a, I've seen this template agreement and I. It's, I happen to know that the town and the city of Cedarburg entered into a similar agreement. Because it also involves city. It's quite a conglomerate of city area, village area.
So we'll need a motion and a second to approve the Columbia Road on a Cedarburg in Grafton Intergovernmental. Intergovernmental Agreement Regarding Reconstruction Maintenance Repairs to Columbia Road Continued Upon Review by Village Attorney, which was just a bad.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion in second, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Very good, that motion carries.
There we are.
Alrighty, the next item coming out of Board of Public Works is the purchase of the. Accessories to a previously purchased dump truck body. We are looking at, or excuse me, a chassis rather. We're looking at the purchase of a dump body, plow, wing and hydraulic system with an anti-icing tank. That would be mounted on a, an existing. Forty three hundred GVW truck chassis. This is coming forward with a recommendation in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty six thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars. In essence, this is the follow-up purchase. We have the chassis without the parts. We're looking to put the part, purchase the parts and put them on the chassis to have a fully functional vehicle for the public works.
And I, I know the public works did that this very closely. And the question I have is this going to be delivered in twenty four or in twenty three?
I believe we will get it in twenty three.
Okay.
We have the chassis already, so it's just a matter of.
Gotcha, because I think the way this is written, the amount down to twenty four forty three thousand GVW truck chassis.
Yes, it is a model year truck. We have it in possession, but that is the model year. Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, so I need a motion in seconds to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Do a motion in second, any discussion on that?
Yeah, Amber, I forgot. Did this go over slightly from the budget? We were able to get this a little bit over fifty thousand dollars over. I was like this. It would have a not. You come from sales of all equipment to you.
All right, we have a further discussion on that. There's a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries on to the report of public safety.
All right, item number one coming out of the report of public safety is a recommendation to approve the acceptance of a scholarship. Valued at about two hundred and ninety five dollars, which would eliminate the cost of conference registration fee for the Wisconsin Law Enforcement Administrative Professionals Conference. The chief's administrative assistant, Rissy Allen, has been a longtime member of this professional group. They have offered a scholarship by the letter of our existing donation policy. Scholarships like this need to be treated such as a donation and therefore require committee recommendation and village board approval. Therefore, the motion to approve is recommended and before the board this evening.
Hope for a motion to approve acceptance of this scholarship valued at two hundred and ninety five dollars.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion in second, any discussion on this? We were all there. All right, motion in second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, and that motion carries under number two.
Very similarly, but with an extra wrinkle, if you will. At no cost, the National Computer Forensics Institute is offering registration for Sergeant Klein. For that reason, it is coming forward as well as the fact that it is an out of state training for a non-department head position. That said, the motion to be approved is before the village board for your consideration from the public safety committee.
Once again, motion in second.
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
The motion in second, any discussion on this item? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries on to number three.
Item number three, very similar to previous years where the ordering window opened up prior to the customary fall window. We are bringing forward a recommendation from public safety to approve. Or authorize Enterprise to order two Chevy Equinox four by four hybrid vehicles during the open reservation process in May. Of twenty twenty three for delivery and payment in twenty twenty four. With the supply chain being what it is. This window is open, opening up extremely early with limited availability for these two administrative. Vehicle, for the ordering of these two administrative vehicles. This would become part of the fleet lease program with the Grafton Police Department. We would not take delivery nor make payment until twenty twenty four. However, this action would commit those expenditures. Which we are planning, would plan for accordingly.
Once again, a motion in second. I move to approve.
I'll second.
The motion in second, any discussion of this?
Yeah.
So we've kind of gone back and forth on this for quite some time, Jesse, but. How much is it? You're not sure. I would, I wouldn't go buy a vehicle if I didn't know how much it's gonna cost. But yet the village taxpayers are supposed to do that.
We do have the lease figures for these items that are actually going to be reduced by the sale of two existing Chevrolet Impalas. To be applied towards those lease figures. I do not have the lease figures in front of me here this evening. But that said, by the sale of those existing assets by Enterprise, that does help offset the cost of the lease. Of these two items that we're considering this evening, these two Chevy Equinox.
Was there any thought to checking into a different kind of vehicle?
These carry quite a high resale value, very similar to the Chevy Silverado administrative vehicles that we have. And they also provide the functionality of an SUV for the detectives primarily that would be using these to be able to carry supplies with them as well. So those two factors being the space available to the detectives, but also the resale value of these Equinox. Really drove that decision. We worked, I understand the police department worked closely with. Enterprise to determine where is the best bang for our buck with regards to pursuing these vehicles that are budgeted for. And that is where we landed with regards to the Chevy Equinox.
I read today that the resale value on them is one of the worst. The first three years, it depreciates very substantially.
There could be.
Read that this vehicle made in Mexico. We want to do that? Do we want to buy vehicles that are made out of a country?
Well, sir, vehicles are made in parts and pieces from all over the world. They could be assembled here. They could be assembled elsewhere. That said, these items, I personally have owned a Chevy Equinox, had great luck with it. That said. This is through Enterprise that they are discussing their resale value. They have volume resale availability to them where they have, not vendors, interested buyers. As on a waiting list for different products that they bring forward. So they have a network in essence built in. And ready to take on or, or purchase out of leaseholds different vehicles. And through Enterprise's experiences, the Equinox has carried that value. So now. Me as a John Q citizen going to get a vehicle off of, pick your car lot and looking to resell it. That's a vastly different thing. I don't carry the buying power of a potential buying power of an enterprise as far as attracting people who are interested in a vehicle.
In the manufacturing in Mexico, that's doesn't base. Doesn't matter to you, because it does to me. We're, we're using tax dollar from the village of Grafton supplementing building a vehicle in Mexico.
I, I can appreciate that. That said, no, it is not a cause for concern for myself, you know.
So Chief, I just wanted to confirm, there's a window where you have to make this reservation to order them, right? It's not a whole month on May, but you do know those dates so that we'll prepare to get our order in?
Yeah, I, I don't know those dates. Based on what happened last year. Enterprise was notified three days prior to the opening and it was only open for fifteen hours.
That's why I'm asking.
So, yeah, so we just need to, the approval ahead of time to give Enterprise and say, yes, please go ahead and get our cars ordered for us so we can get them.
So, yeah, I, Jesse, I'm just concerned because, you know, we still, I'm kind of still waiting, you know, later on in the year when Paul gives us a. Making a presentation about where we're at with this process. I am leery to go outside of the box of, you know, ordering one a year or however many, three, two. I realize that there's a shortage. I know there was more of a shortage a few years ago during COVID. So I, I heard that would just be the one, like, you know, planned. So that is my concern. I still don't know if this, this process is gonna weigh out that it's something that is actually viable for the tax dollars.
All right, any other questions here? Jim?
So one more thing, like, would there be an option to buy? Not to exceed a number?
I think.
Well, at least we got.
I have not been in communication with Enterprise to be able to answer that question. I don't know if Paul would have some insight on that.
I know it locked into their sale price of the existing vehicle, so it's hard to say the exact number. I think we'll back. Between. This is unmarked. These will be unmarked vehicles used to replace the two Chevy Impalas that we have right now. I mean, for comparison, the Silverado is sixty five, fifty dollars a month. This is gonna be. Probably less than that, I don't know.
Yeah, the going with the Chevy Equinox actually drops our, our liability on the village. Because number one, the vehicles that we have to replace this next year were Tahos. So those vehicles, we moved those out and are replacing the two Impalas now, which drops our liability for twenty twenty four. And that was actually built into our capital improvement budget last year. Going with the Chevy Equinox over the Chevy Tahos for this year actually reduced it by fifteen thousand dollars. Those cars are fifteen thousand dollars less than the Chevy Tahoe. So for us, it made more sense for Enterprise, it made more financial sense for the village to be able to move forward that way because there is a greater return on investment.
Okay, I, I have one quick question here is that, you know, I, I know that we have in public works where we put orders for trucks in for the next year, so it's not a. Huge concern for me. You know, I get, I get that with the utilization of vehicles are very concerning to me when I bought my truck. And it really wanted to be made in Mexico, but I had to have a deal on it. With that said, I, I, I kind of look at this, is, this is going to be out of twenty twenty four money, correct?
Yes.
So this will be placed into the twenty twenty four budget.
Correct.
As far as the leasing and this is part of the five-year plan. Of CIP.
Yes.
That's correct. Part of the CIP. So I, I guess my questions have been answered, but this is gonna be part of the twenty twenty four budget.
Yes.
So unless there's other questions here. We already do what we.
We have trustee Armstrong on the motion, trustee Fenton on the second.
Okay, now let's go to a vote here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, so show hands. Okay, so show hands, aye. And name. I'm sure we can subtract closely, but it's official. That motion passes for two. Okay, last proof sharing of resources and equipment with Milwaukee Police Department during Milwaukee National Convention.
Very similar to the approval that Milwaukee asked or documentation that Milwaukee Police Department asked for. In the recent past with the Democratic National Convention that came to town, simply asking for a commitment to assist. With this large nationwide event. So that said, it is specifically for the and during the Republican National Convention to be held in the city of Milwaukee, July fifteenth through the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I'll move the motion, the authority to share resources in any form of Milwaukee Police Department during Republican National Convention, Public Safety in Milwaukee, July fifteenth through the eighteen, twenty twenty-four. I move to approve.
I'll second.
The motion in second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carry on to the department and office.
Leading off with a few things for the village board here. The Lime Kill Park cleanup event was very well attended over the weekend. Thank you to all the volunteers who turned out and to help out. Really appreciate their efforts as Lime Kill got a good going over and a cleanup over the weekend. Speaking of aesthetics, the, there were twenty new flower planters that have been installed on light posts throughout the downtown. Flowers will be planted in these decorative planters once the overnight temperatures increase and the plants can help be healthy. And not worry about losing those. This is a collaborative project with the Grafton Area Chamber of Commerce. Another item here, liquor license inspections kicked off this week. It's a collaborative effort between building inspection, police, fire, and the state of Wisconsin representatives. Who conducted joint inspections of those establishments holding liquor licenses. Renewals were due last Friday. The clerk's office is currently working with four outstanding businesses. Who have not yet turned in their renewals, being Martini, Martini Pete's Bottle Shop, Lobos, and Target. One last item I wanted to speak to as it was a pretty significant event here in the village. Last week, seventh grade teacher at GLMS, John Long Middle School, was arrested and is under investigation stemming from comments the teacher made during class directed towards his students. Chief Cappanera has worked very closely with school superintendent Jeff Nelson to draft both the initial press release. As well as a message that was sent out to all families and staff to reassure them that it is a safe environment for their return today, Monday. With the feedback from the school district, chief worked in turn with the Ozaki County Sheriff's Office and the Wisconsin State Patrol over the weekend to provide, to coordinate, and provide. An enhanced presence at all of the schools within the district. I'm very happy to have reported that all went very well today. Everything was very smooth with the return back to the school day. And the police department has received some very positive feedback from the community today for their response and presence. So just wanted to speak to that very important situation that did arise late last week and kudos to. The collaboration between the school district and police department and other agencies in the area to ensure the safety of all involved. So. Well done.
And very, very good. Amber, anything you need to report on this stuff? Or anybody else here might. All right. Yep.
So I guess Jesse and Amber, in light of those citizens here. To express their dissatisfaction about the heritage possibly. That has come back to public works, like I think it's ever been at public works.
We'll have to review the feedback and determine what the best course of action would be. I wouldn't have an answer for that right now.
And then my other question is, along with the liquor license. Are we also back to where we were a year or two ago about the other devices?
I can follow up with the clerk's office. I only got the report regarding liquor licenses. I can check into that.
Okay, on to the report bills. We're gonna, we have no licenses to approve, so I had reported those I saw back and forth from. A lot of good questions coming back and forth. I'll need a motion. Second.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, any discussions, any questions? All right, we have a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to, convenient call session here for someone to stay settled, nineteen point five one E for employee, this doesn't really matter. I would like to suggest we meet at eight twenty, give us four five minutes so we can either. Get in the rest of.
Move at first, last, then.
There's no action in the full session. I will, I hope for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion concerned.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.